Parent with us throughout this process, and I think you're aware of that. And you're right, it is late, there's not enough time now to properly and thoroughly research and implement any of these options for the next upcoming school year. Nor is there enough time for families and students to prepare for these types of changes. Logistically, families need time to secure before and after school spots which are already taken for next school year. Plan for transportation, adjust their schedules, et cetera, et cetera. Finding out about new school, possible new school assignments in the spring does not allow us enough time to do any of this. Another comment that was made was that these recommendations are driven by money, shouldn't be the main priority, but it is. Our kids should be the main priority. Our students are in a very fragile place after all of the COVID disruptions. We need to be sure that any changes we are making allows ample time to prepare our children, children. Kids are not as resilient as people like to say. They are anxious and nervous and their social and emotional needs should come first. We should have their health and well-being at the forefront of our decision-making process. And the options that were created by the task force do not consider these needs. I understand that there's a major budget issue, but our children shouldn't have to pay for those mistakes. I agree that it's fine and inevitable to redistrict or change feeding patterns, but it has to be done properly and on a certain timeline. There's simply not enough time now to make any major changes like these for the upcoming school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Caitlin Dow.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Dow. I live on Parkside Avenue in Braintree. As these lovely ladies have so eloquently described the task force situation. I come as a parent of a newly entering kindergarten child. I just recently went through this registration process. And I was shocked that in nowhere in this millions of pages that I signed and dotted my I's and T's that it didn't mention anything about redistricting or a change of school. That inadequate was sold or that that they might not be going to homeschools. Not once did it mention that. And I found out through the grapevine that we're being redistrict and that it hasn't been decided yet. But then I see an email about payment being due. And I respectfully ask that if redistricting isn't finalized, that you at least give it to the parents where you pause payment. Because asking for over $500 when these parents have no idea where their kids are even going to school next year. They have siblings, they have carpool situations. I respectfully ask you, don't collect any payment until the redistricting is finalized and the parents are aware first.
Sarah Demeo.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for the forum. I didn't write it out. Sarah Demeo, Academy Street. I have three kids in the schools, one in the high school. And my youngest is in first grade. So it's a nine-year spread, kind of a veteran of this right now, and I have a really that's my perspective. I could spend thirty minutes talking about how wonderful the schools are. And at every level, starting with the teachers and the programming and the curriculum. Lots of things I'm very concerned about, shocking to see the high school. And I'm going to mention that because it relates to everything that's going on tonight. The condition of the high school, but more importantly, and I just read this today, I was reading the old MSBA SOI statement of work from a few years ago, and it said, the conditions of the labs are not what we need for a 21st century learning environment. So we should have been talking about what we need for 21st century education twenty-three years ago. And now we're broke. So if if Braintree is broke, then we need to be talking about that. And I remember in a meeting years ago about something with the middle school, someone said, one of the school committee members, not here, said, well, it's not so, we don't really care about the schools. The schools, it doesn't matter what's going on in the schools. What matters is the teachers, what goes on inside the schools. So now we have to be here for the teachers because if we're saying, well, the buildings don't matter and the teachers don't matter, then what do we have? You know, we're here because we expect Braintree to have a very high-quality school system. That's why we moved here. That's why we put down roots. And Mr. Mayor and all of you as elected officials, I will support you in starting to have some difficult conversations with our friends and neighbors and residents about what we need to do to bring in more money. That's a hot topic. It's debatable. There's different options, but we need to be talking about it. We can't be hiding. You didn't have to read page thirty-seven of a PDF of a form to see that there's problems. I expect all of you to be letting us know the realities of what's going on. Okay? Thank you very much.
Is it Katie?
McCrina. So I'm Katie McCrina, ninety Cachado Road. And I am the parent of a BPS student. I'm concerned with the lack of transparency regarding the formation and operations of the task force. Information regarding the task force was not shared broadly with the community, including its members, stated goals or data or approach being used to identify recommendations. Despite repeated requests for additional details and supporting research, information has not sufficiently been shared with the public. The scale of this project requires broad community engagement, not solely limited to those who happen to learn of the task force because they were in attendance at a school committee or PTO meeting. Incorporation of all relevant data, not solely limited to total class size as the only data point driving recommendations. And adherence to the open meeting law and transparency with all stakeholders. Since none of these requirements have been met, I strongly urge the school committee to cease the consideration of any of the task force's forthcoming recommendations. To regain the public's trust and to encourage engagement moving forward, I am advocating for a new task force to be established that uses the district data team toolkit and an external consultant, posts all materials prominently on the BPS website, and regularly solicits community feedback using surveys. Braintree students deserve a more thoughtful and thorough process than has been demonstrated thus far. And I am hopeful the school committee and superintendent superintendent will take the necessary steps to ensure improvement in the process moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tom Talat.
Thanks, everyone. I'm Tom Talat. I live on Home Park Road in Braintree. I have three kids in school. I want to just reiterate a couple of things that that a lot of other people have already pointed out, clearly the lack of communication to this point. And better abhorrent for for those of us that are parents that are trying to find out what's going on. The first I was exposed to was at the PTO meeting. And even in that meeting, the information that was provided was very high level, like very much just here are the things we're considering. No detail, no analysis, no data. I asked for some of that. We had to chase a lot of that down. As I've dug into some of the information, as somebody that has served on a lot of task forces, including running task forces, I'm appalled by the lack of just basic approach to how you run a task force. From the very simple things of what are the goals of the task force? We've heard, well, we have a we have a shortfall of money. What else? There's inequities and efficiencies listed. What are those inequities and efficiencies? What are the problems we're trying to address? None of that's really detailed. Secondarily, as you get into that, as you come up with proposals, there is no detail in here as to how you're actually evaluating these proposals. What are the pros and cons? What is the data analysis? What is the research that people have mentioned? I've never seen such a lack of detail and information. There's no way for us to even look at it and evaluate it. We've done a bunch of analysis ourself. Some of the information that's in there is just absolutely incorrect. It's not true. It's false. Dig in. But we don't, we're not, that information isn't out there. It's not shared. It's not provided. I don't know if it's done. So just from a basic standpoint of how you run a task force, the information that you need to do, that the level you have to go to to go through the pros and cons to evaluate, when you put forward a proposal, there's always negatives to that. And those things are need to be called out. We need to be able to evaluate what's good about this, what's bad about this, what are the pros and cons of these, and what are the possible downfalls of taking these actions? None of that is detailed. There's very limited information, a couple bullet points on here. Here's some of the things that are good. Here's some of the things that are bad. It's not really detailed to the level it needs to be. So just from a parent's perspective, we need to be able to evaluate these proposals. We need to be able to say, things that are affecting us, our kids, our families, we need to be able to say, what is good about this? What is bad about this? This is not about change. It's not about not wanting to have change. It's changed for the right reasons. And if we're going to do change, we need to have a very good reason as to why. And we need to understand why we could make those changes and I'll be okay with that. And this task force has not done that. It's not provided that information. It's not called length. So we asked the task force be reevaluated, looked at from how we've approached this and provides the information that's necessary to make these kinds of these kinds of recommendations for potential decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Or anybody else in the room that didn't sign up that wanted to speak? Is there anybody online?
There are, but there's nobody with their hand up. Give him a second.
Just curious, how many people are online? Forty, four zero?
Four zero.
And no one?
At this point, nobody has their hand up.
Okay, so I want to make sure we don't miss anybody.
Last call.
No?
Nope.
Okay. All right, we will be moving on to Routine Matters, approval of open second January ninth, twenty twenty-three. Questions or motion? A motion? I have a motion by the mayor, second by Ms. Taffiel, was in favor. Any opposed?
Abstention wasn't there.
Communications commendations, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have several really commendations for work being done through the district. The first goes to a bus driver. And I only know her as Kim, but Kim runs or drives the bus D route for Morrison every day. And a couple of weeks ago, as she was going back to the bus yard after driving her whole route, she noticed a small third grader walking alone to school. Pulled over, the kid had missed the bus, parents had already gone to work and the kid had decided to walk to school. So Kim picked the kid up, drove her right back to Morrison, made sure the kid was safe and sound. And, you know, Mr. Riad Nover at Morrison was astounded by the the level of services she provided and her caring concern. So I thought it was worth mentioning this evening. Also, I just want to make the committee aware of some professional development being done by our nursing staff starting on Tuesday. Many of you may be aware of an incident that happened in the NFL regarding a young player who was hit during a game and then went into cardiac arrest. On Tuesday, our nursing staff will go through cardiac arrest preparedness training. Ultimately, that will result in a comprehensive plan in place across the district about how to respond to cardiac arrest situations. As you know, we have AEDs in all our schools and on our fields. We're also doing outreach with our entire teaching staff that will make sure that we can train as many people in CPR as possible. So I wanted to make you aware that initiative by our nursing staff. And last but least, over the weekend, our our music group, we had three students audition to be part of the Massachusetts Music Educators Association All-State Music Festival. And we are announcing that, and I'm going to apologize, well, Dina Oliver Dadi, a sophomore at Braintree High School, has been accepted into the All-State Festival Choir. She will attend rehearsals, the All-State Conference, and then perform at Symphony Hall in March with other members of the choir across the state. So it's quite an accomplishment for Dina. We wish her the very best in all of that. That's what I have.
Any comments on communication or commendations from the committee?
From the chair? It's silly. It's just a quick question. I think that's great that the nurses are getting that kind of training. Is that training also given to, obviously, the trainers? The trainer, athletic trainer, as well as any of the coaches or anything like that?
Well, the CPR training would be, you know, in terms of the trainer herself, I don't believe so, but I'd have to check on that.
Okay, because that, I think that would be important. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Lee. Moving on to gifts to schools. All right, I will list all the gifts as usual and ask for a motion on the, in the entire list. Bay State Textiles, three checks totaling $103. South Middle School, Two deposits for the Washington DC trip. Braintree High School Athletic Department gift to schools totaling $2,053.91. One check for $378.91 from My Team Shot BSN Sports and $1,675 from the Quincy Soccer 360. Manadequid School Kindergarten gift to schools $976.57. One check in the amount of $931.57 from the Life Touch fundraiser and one check in the amount of $45 from the MSKC gift fundraiser. And then school supplies donation from a resident, Mark Henderson, donation of binders, folders, loose leaf paper, post-it notes, pens, pencils, and markers to the school for student use.
Move to accept, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon. Second by Ms. Cobbleman. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you for that. Moving on, back to you, Mr. Lee.
In your package, you will find a request for a trip approval to Hatt's Peak up in New Hampshire, being chaperoned by Matt Baker, teacher at the high school. It's a high school trip. It's very similar to some other trips you've already approved. Right now, they are seeking to get one bus load of students. If more students expressed an interest and they were able, they'd run a second bus. But it's a very similar to trips I've taken in the past, and I would seek your approval on that.
Any discussion or any questions about the trip?
I was an old crew of Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cobbleman. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving on. Superintendent Staff. Back to you, Mr. Lee.
So this evening, as you've already heard, we had intended to present results of the task force work. The group has met five times in total. We'll go over that briefly. But before we get started, just to kind of create a context for some of the conversation we're going to have this evening, one of the members of the task force is community member Ken Belcher. Ken, I think his, all his children have gone through the school system. But at this point, he served on the task force in the capacity of our community representative. So Ken was going to introduce the topic with some comments. Step up the table, Ken.
It's fine. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As we were going through or having been the options presented to us for equity and efficiency, conversation also started to move around towards the point of number of these recommendations, maybe somewhat short-term in nature, that we may be missing a big picture of what needs to be done with the branch of public schools, particularly from operations, maintenance, and a capital perspective. And so as that discussion started to take hold, it was thought that perhaps for the front end of this presentation, we would have what we called a preamble to sort of discuss some people's thoughts in the committee and task force about what we thought needed to be done, as well as some of these options that are being addressed. After the holidays, Jim contacted me and said, would you be willing to draft this preamble? And I said I would, but that once I did that, I'd like to circulate it around to the members of the task force to make sure that what I said was close to what they thought as well. And my initial draft was in the first-person perspective. I left it that way, waiting for comments to come back to see if I missed the boat, so to speak. No comments have come through. I checked with Jim just for this meeting. So apparently, people agree with this and the way it's structured. I've left it in the first person, so you'll forgive me for that. But if you would indulge me, it's not very long. But if you'll indulge, let me read from this so I don't miss any of the points you'll raise during the task force meeting. I'm a lifelong resident of Braintree, as is my wife, Leslie. We've attended the branch of public schools from kindergarten all the way through high school, as did our two children. Our daughter teaches in one of the elementary schools and has done so for fourteen years here in Braintree. My wife is a public school teacher, a dean and administrator for thirty-eight years, and spent a portion of her career at Braintree High School teaching there. I dedicated my career to healthcare. I was hospital administrator and CEO upon retirement and was also in that position for thirty-eight years. We, as a family in Braintree, are grateful for the education that we received from the teachers, administrators, and support staff at the Branche Public Schools, and are well aware that the Branche Public School System has had a long history of very strong support and very strong recommendation and reputation. From that perspective, we are well aware that a favorable reputation of the Branche Public Schools plays a key role in explaining why citizens live in Braintree and why so many citizens are looking to move to Braintree. A strong school system really helps make Braintree a desirable place to live. This in turn also helps keep citizens' home real estate values, generally people's highest investment as a family, viable and healthy. Naturally, citizens want to protect the investment in their homes. As a strong system, school system helps do this, the opposite is also true. If the reputation of a school system deteriorates, generally speaking, so do real estate values. And if real estate is negatively impacted, so is the town. It can become a vicious downward spiral, one that's very difficult to stop and even harder to turn around. But sadly, the first people who suffer are our children. What became clear during the task force work to evaluate ways to address the financial challenges currently facing our schools is that our schools are in trouble. Some may see the very positive improvements in East and South Middle Schools and think we are fine. Although those are very, very positive first steps, they're just that, they're first steps. If you sat in the task force meetings, you would clearly recognize that even with these investments, we're still falling behind. From an operational perspective, annually, our budget needs to increase by approximately four percent just to keep programs and services that existed in the previous year. As budgets became tighter during the COVID years, the school budget was reduced to 2.5% in the 2021, 2022 year and 0.8%, 0.8% in the 22, 23 year. This means fuel resources, staff and others were available to our students, which results in diminishing learning opportunities, the types of programming our school systems can offer students. Branches per school, per pupil's expenditure in our schools was in nineteen, in 2021, was $17,464. That ranks us 260th of the 400th districts in the state, from the bottom of 35%. From a capital perspective, one needs only to see some of the older buildings such as Highlands, Hollis, even the high school to see how integrated our facilities have become. Our facilities are in desperate need of updating. While the projects at East and South are very important, they don't solve the problem. These integrated environments have a profound impact on the programming for our students, as well as the morale of students and staff alike. The issues confronting our facilities will continue to grow over time as 100-plus-year-old buildings continue to get older, while the evolving needs of our students looking to need in this day and age requires safe, comfortable buildings that are outfitted with materials and equipment appropriate for their goals. Naturally, this also negatively impacts our ability to recruit and retain high-quality teachers, and we've got a lot of them, support staff, administrators to educate our students. From maintenance perspective, our buildings need continuous attention to remain functional and open. Decades of use and limited maintenance and renovation investment relative to need have often resulted in failing systems that impact our student learning. Leaking roofs, leaking windows, broken heating and electrical systems are not uncommon in these schools. As you recall, the electrical system at PHS several years ago resulted in the school not being able to open for multiple days. Although the recent consolidation of maintenance and custodial services may help accelerate certain maintenance repairs, the age of our buildings will require a commitment of labor and resources on a much larger scale to allow for a positive learning environment for all of our students and their teachers until capital projects can be providing larger-scale renovations and replacement of our sites. Ladies and gentlemen, we can't allow the reputation of the Branche Public Schools to deteriorate. As the saying goes, as go the schools, so goes the town. If the reputation of our schools falters, so does the reputation of our town. As our town reputation falters, families' investment in their homes will likely be negatively impacted. Most importantly, our children are negatively affected. There's only so much that our dedicated teachers, administrators, and support staff can do to offset the lack of financial investment in our schools. I am confident from what I heard at the task force meetings that teachers and administrators and support staff are doing all they can to educate our children under very challenging conditions. While you listen to the belt-tightening suggestions later this evening that results from the task force work, please consider that these suggestions are only to plug the holes in the dam. These suggestions are only short-term measures. They will not solve the very real problem that the town of Braintree has as it continues to fall short with its financial commitment to our teachers, administrators, and school support staff. But most importantly, we have fallen short of our commitment to our children. Folks, we can't shrink our way to success here. We must dedicate ourselves to invest in our schools' operational, maintenance, and capital needs. I encourage you, members of our task force, encourage you as you go through your deliberations, to please make this the highest priorities as you move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Milton.
So with that as the preamble, I am going to walk you through several slides to talk a little bit about where the discussions were held in the meetings that we had together. And then towards the end, I'm going to ask another member of the task force to come up and talk about some of the items that we would consider recommending for consideration to the school committee. So again, to provide context of who was on the task force, these were all the members who were invited to attend, which is not to say that each one attended every single meeting, but these were the individuals that were invited to come and participate in the conversation. So obviously, there were members of the school committee, myself, the assistant superintendent, our director of finance, five principals, largely elementary principals, an assistant principal from the middle school level, a special education director, the BEA president, four teachers, eight parents. CPAC is, as you know, our special education parent group, an academic director and a community member with who you've already met, Mr. Belcher. On the right-hand side, you see the meeting dates and the the dates that we held in terms of meetings. It started in June of last spring. Last meeting together was in December 12. One of, one of the issues that brought the task force together, for those of you who were here last spring, was the budget conversations from last year, where the budgets were obviously difficult, where we had in mind deficits that we were concerned about as we move forward out of the current fiscal year. And it's driven by the numbers up on the screen. So last year, the FY22 approved budget for the school system on the town, you know, the town provided funding was $71,947,500. However, what we actually spent last year was $75,566,622. And as you all know, we were able to do that because we had saved some of the ESSR money, the COVID relief money from the federal government to the tune of $3.1 million, which we used as one-time money to bridge that difference between $75 million and $72 million. As we got into the budget conversation last year in anticipation of the current budgetary year, at the end, we, through the town, were able to get a budget passed for Braintree's side of $73,472,68. However, our actual spend this year, what we anticipate spending between the beginning of the school year and the end of the school year is $75,671,683 million. And again, we're using one-time offset money, in this case of $2.2 million, which is the remaining ESSR money that we had, which means that we're out of it. And some circuit breaker savings that we had been trying to put together to be able to move the budget cycle one year up in terms of how we budget. But we needed to spend it in this capacity. So as you know, circuit breakers, state money that we receive for extraordinary special education costs. So again, we balanced the budget this year with $2.2 million of that in ESSR money. So the concern, quite obviously, is we don't have that $2.2 million again. And, you know, we needed to be able to take a look in anticipation of what this budget season might look like now to ensure that we are in an appropriate position to maintain the services that we have, to maintain the education that we provide in light of $2.2 million of deficit before we get started. In terms of the outlook that the task force took on, it was to look at these items, inequitable teacher loads and cost inefficiencies that exist throughout the elementary level. In that context, there has been no significant redistricting within Braintree since 2003. And just taking a look at what it might mean to strongly consider such an exercise. Some of you will remember that, I think it was three years ago, we also came to the committee with ideas around redistricting, around budget concerns. So it's not the first time the concept has been raised. Class sizes are currently very low, comparatively speaking. This is driven by COVID. During the COVID epidemic, we lost approximately 400 students to either private schools or movement, a variety of different causes. And also inequitable across the schools, meaning that some, some schools, a grade level could be high in class size number. In another school in the district, a class size could be low at that same grade level. Options exist with respect to facilities both now and in the near future. This really highlights the, the idea of South, the existing South building, as new South opens and the current middle school leaves South to go into that facility, what should be done with the existing South building? With movements to a grade five to eight middle school model, at that point, all the elementary buildings will have space. Most of the elementaries now have space because of East taking on fifth grade. When the new South opens, obviously Liberty and Highlands will also lose their fifth-grade classes, which will create opportunity in their buildings as well because classes will open up. So the task force was, in essence, looking to identify and address through a recommended plan any deficiencies in specific efficiencies or equity. These are the meetings that were held on, in June of last spring. We just gave an overview of why we were together. Some basic data based on things that you'd want to consider, class sizes, transportation, special education, a variety of different topics that could be relevant in the conversations that would come. We looked at students, and I'll show you a slide in a moment. When I say we looked at students physically where they're located relative to the schools that they attend. When we got back together in September of 20, we updated the enrollments for the current school year to take a look at had any change occurred over the course of the summer, where those enrollments were, where we saw growth, where we saw class sizes that looked too big, where we saw class sizes that looked too small. And we began to brainstorm around potential uses for Old South. And again, I'll get to that on another slide. We also talked about the pre-kindergarten program at the high school. This is This is the special education program. As you all know, there are two different preschool programs at the high school. This is the one that services our special education population. Also, kindergarten's classes across the district and some of the inequity that currently exists in the length of school day for our kindergarten programs that run in the homeschool versus that run at Menadequid. We got together again in October. We began to have a conversation about whether or not it would make sense to send a third school to South. Presently, we have four elementary schools that feed East. When new South opens, the plan, as we sit here today, is to send Liberty and Highlands to that school. And this was a conversation about would it make sense to consider a third school going to South rather than East? And we can talk about that in a second as well. We also began a conversation around specialized programs. As a district, Braintree has prided itself rightfully on maintaining a lot of our specialized programming here in district, so our students can stay within the district, go to school with their peers, be part of their neighborhoods, all of those things that we would want for them, and whether or not the distribution of those specialized programs is what we want it to be with the opportunities that are about to present themselves when new South opens. November, we continued the conversation around special education programs in terms of what programs might be serviced elsewhere in the district than their current location. And then we also had a very broad conversation about if we were to redistrict completely, meaning the entire district, what could that look like? What would the considerations be? What do the options seem like? And again, all of this is conceptual, and so there is no deep dive into any one of these items. If the committee identifies anything they'd want us to look further into, we will come back with any information that you requested. So what I'm going to show you this evening is really the 40,000-foot view of what it could look like. And again, the examples that I will give are truly just that. They're examples, and I'll set the parameters before I begin to talk about it. When we met on December 12th, it was a conversation about all the things that we had discussed previously and whether or not we would recommend anything to this committee. Prior to this meeting, we had sent out a survey among task force members. You're going to see the results of that. And then subsequent to this meeting, after allowing people an opportunity to kind of digest and understand that we were going to come here this evening on January 23rd, we actually sent out another survey just to ensure that they could truly and articulately state their own opinions, not in a large group, but in the privacy of their own internet. So part of when we talk about students, we talked about where are they? Give me one second. I need to move some kids around. So up on the screen are elementary students. The dark purple and top-right quadrant is Morrison. The yellow at the top of the screen is Ross. Green is Flaherty. Red is Hollis. Light blue is Highlands, and purple is Liberty. So part of the conversation was just about, this is the current map. This is where kids live compared to where they go to school. And does this map make sense? And it's an open-ended question. You can say yes, you can say no. You can have questions about why it is the way it is. As you all know, in a community, as time progresses, neighborhoods get hot, people move into them. Some other neighborhoods get older, their kids go through the system, they graduate, they move on to colleges. So the map gets a little skewed over time because the neighborhoods go through their own transitions in time. If you see a color that doesn't make sense to you where it is, recall that we have specialized programs in our district. So often, a student who would live in one district is actually going to school in another district because that's where the specialized program is. So we had a broad conversation just about this map and what the implications of this map might be in terms of what we may consider if you wanted to redistrict. Give me one second. Again, we discussed that. In the same breath, we talked a little bit about enrollments, and these are broad-based enrollments. These numbers are from September of this year, the beginning of the school year. And it's, sorry. It's to illustrate what the average class size is compared to what the actual class sizes are. So this is a simple math slide. So if you go to the top of the screen, you can see Flaherty Elementary. If you look under one, and that represents grade one, there's 71 grade-one students at Flaherty. We currently run four sections of those grade-one sections. So Highlands has 71 first graders, four sections. Hollis has 54 first graders, four sections. You can go down the list with me. And when you get to the bottom, you can see from a district perspective, we have 377 grade-one students, and we run 22 sections of grade-one. That mathematically is a class size average of 17.1. However, in some of our schools, we have class sizes around 14, and some other schools, we have class sizes of 21 for grade-one. And you can see the exercise, it just repeats itself for each grade level. In grade two, our average class size is 17.7. In grade three, our average class size is 18.6. In grade four, it is 19.2. And because they're still in an elementary school, if you want to look at grade five, currently the average class size is 20. So we talked about that. When we talked about feeder schools, we talked about Old South. Again, what can we do with it? In essence, the town must use it for an educational purpose. This is part of an MSBA project that happened about 10 years ago. If it is not used for an educational purpose, the MSBA would seek some of their money back. It is a lot of money. It is not a small amount of money. However, if we maintain it as an educational facility, they would not look for that money, and we would not have to repay it. So some of the toppings of conversation were about, could we combine multiple elementary schools and put them into Old South? Would we want to look at an early elementary center located at Old South? Is there some combination of schools and programs that could fill Old South in a meaningful way? That would be a good use for the building. Or could we lease it to another educational organization, such as STAY or CATS, BASE, or some others? So the conversation really focused on this, and in this conversation, but really, of all the options that were being discussed, the one that everybody came back to was the early elementary center. Somewhat driven, I think, and not to speak for the other people, but by the idea that in terms of the kindergarten experience our kids currently receive, it is different. If you send your kid to Menadequid, their day is shorter than if you send your kid to a kindergarten program in the high school. There are some savings here in terms of transportation with respect to efficiencies, but there's also some, you know, professional reasons that you do it, allowing all kindergarten teachers to work together on curriculum and things of that nature, which is not to say that it's all pros and no cons. There are absolutely cons to doing it this way, but compared to the other items, this is the one that gained traction with the group. So from there, we actually took a walk through Old South with representatives from the preschool program, kindergarten center, facilities, and a number of other administrators, just to take a look at, is it even an appropriate thing to consider? The feedback was that, yes, in fact, it is something that is possible and viable, and in some cases desirable, but again, not without cons. Some of the other items, you know, combining elementary schools, there was no really good way to do that. And then leasing it to other organizations. Given its proximity to the new South, you'd be introducing a different population of adults and students to the campus, which from a safety perspective is not necessarily the best-case scenario. So again, the focus remained on early elementary center. In terms of schools that feed into the new South, this was one of the considerations that raised the conversation, should you send a third school to South? When, during this current school year, there are 515 students at South. That is down. A couple of years ago, that number was 680. So the population on that side of town has been slowly getting smaller. And you can see that right this moment, in terms of opening for next year, with the addition of the fifth grade from Liberty and Highlands, we'd be looking at a population in that building of 656 students. The building is designed for 800 students. So there's opportunity here, whether it's preferable or not, there is opportunity. Again, there are some reasons that you would do it. There are certainly reasons that you might not want to do it, but this, again, was something that we discussed. Part of the discussion really, though, focused on what ultimately you would need to do in terms of picking a school, and the two that were identified for conversation with Flaherty and Morrison. To do it in the first three years doesn't require anything other than sending the kids over to New South. However, as time goes on, in one, two, three, in year four, all of a sudden, the population grows too large for the existing South. So to make this work, you would have to commit to some level of redistricting, whether it be Flaherty or whether it be Morrison, almost assuredly sending those students over to Ross to make the numbers work for the new South building. So you could increase the population of Ross that would feed to East, while reducing the population that would go to South, keeping that numbers within the parameter. So there's a lot of conversation about this one among the task force, and you'll see that when we get the results of the surveys. We also then talked about specialized programming. We have a number of outstanding programs that, again, keep our kids in district. You can see kind of the size of these programs. There's a listed up on the screen. At Flaherty, we are running five classrooms of the specialized program. Morrison has four classrooms. Ross currently has two. Menadequid has one. Hollis has four. And for those of you who do not know, down at 74 Pond Street, we run the launch program. Launch program services our students in the ages of 18 to 22. So these are our current programs. One of the concerns that has been expressed repeatedly over the last couple of years is the intensity of some of the needs of our students and, you know, whether or not it begins to overwhelm staffs at certain sites. What we also have is an opportunity that didn't exist previously, is Liberty and Highlands. You know, with the movement of the fifth grade out of Liberty and Highlands, you could entertain sending a program to each school, taking some of the pressure off of existing schools and sites, and making sure that every school is represented with a specialized program, because part of the feedback that came back from staff and from administration was the benefit to non-specialized students of having the programs within their school, so that there is true benefit to having a program accessible to all of our students across the district. And then the corollary benefit would be, again, being able to service kids in a more efficient way with less pressure on individual staffs. And then the last exercise, and I have to just keep reiterating this. This is an exercise. This is conceptual. This is not a set plan at all. But it is to give a sense of what it means if you completely redistrict. To do the exercise, I, on my own, just to do the math, arbitrarily picked 20 kids per class in grades one and two and 24 kids per class in grades three and four. That number is not set in stone. You can move it up and down. Your savings increase or decrease based on what you do. But it just gives you a sense of when you balance things out, what it begins to look like. So again, if you look at the grade-one list, students in grade one, first column on the left, and you add them all up, 327 students. And if you said, I want 20 kids in every single class, you only need 16.4 sections. That would save you six sections across the district. If you do the same exercise in grade two, you only need 19.4 grade-two sections. That would save you two sections. And then if you go down to the last row, in terms of grade three, if you had 24 kids in a class, equitably distributed, you'd only need 15.9 sections of those, or four sections saved. And then in grade four, 16.1, five sections saved. So in this very simplistic example, you could save 17 sections across the district. Now again, that is high-level math. It is just that, it is math. But that's where the savings are. So if you want to talk about efficiencies and you want to talk about budget, you know, the benefit to taking a look at this is because there is savings. And again, the numbers fluctuate based on what parameters you set within it. How this works is by moving families from one school to another. And we ran a model that demonstrated that it could work. I think we ended up moving 80 families to get to the numbers that we were looking for. And I think because this is, the numbers in front of you are totally efficient, and life doesn't work that way, the savings in that model were 15. But in terms of budget, in terms of money, if that's what our focus is in a moment, then, you know, redistricting does have a certain advantage to it. So at this point, I'm going to ask Dr. Rachel Horak to come up and kind of walk through some of the survey results and her impressions of them.
Thanks, Mr. Lee. Hi, I'm Rachel Horak. I have three children in the Flaherty School. For my professional life, I run professional development programs for college biology professors, specifically related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I took the volunteer position on this committee, seeing inequities as in the title, and thought that I could lend my professional expertise. At Flaherty, I'm the co-president of the PTO, and I'm also on the DEI committee there, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And I come to here today as the messenger of what the task force came forth. Okay, so these are some of the first-round voting that the task force did. And do note that there, it does say how many of the respondents support, but there are no names attached to it. And I'll start, before diving into this data, with a couple of bullet points, because Mr. Lee asked me to talk about these things specifically. First, the overall sentiment of the group was very somber. The people in all the task force meetings recognize the gravity of this situation and recognize the gravity that redistricting really is a euphemism for losing teachers' jobs. So when Mr. Lee says 17 sections saved, that is 17 educators that we will lose in this district, some of whom are in this room right here. This process, the only data that the task force saw was the data that you saw tonight on the slides. We saw data about the number of students in each section, and we saw the data about where the students are. But at no point did we see any other pieces of data. We didn't see too many numbers and financial constraints about these, how many dollars each of these options would save. So you note here, on this option here presented on the slide, there's, we don't see any financial savings on this slide. And Jim, these were ideas creation, because it was said several times within the task force meeting that it would be up to the school committee to make the decisions and set the policies and decide what they wanted to do with these ideas. So I just want to be very clear that the data that you saw in the presentation tonight is the only data that the task force saw. Next, I'm going to, I brought a handout. And I'm sorry, I didn't bring enough copies for everybody, but I'll learn next time how many copies I need. So one thing that I think that we felt short in with the task force was talking about inequities. And I share with you, for those of you that are at home, I'm sharing with the group right now a diagram of what equality is versus what equity is. And I think that we really missed the call, and we missed an opportunity for talking about equity in our task force. And I bring this up because in my professional opinion, we talked about inequalities, and that's important, too. But the mission of the task force was to talk about inequities. So I think it's important to find our terms. So the definition of equity is allocating resources to ensure that everyone has the access to the same resources and opportunities. Okay, one example of that, we learned in last school committee meeting last week, we heard a presentation about MCAS scores across the district. And we learned that BPS, and BHS in particular, provides extra learning support for students who are at risk of not meeting the, of not partially meeting the expectations and graduating and not fulfilling the MCAS requirement. And we learned that BHS last week provides lots of tutoring and remedial classes to help those students get ready for those MCAS tests. And that's one example of addressing inequities, okay? Helping those students with resources and supports so that they can also graduate. And I think that's really important distinction. Equity recognizes that there's advantages and barriers. For example, in my picture that I'm showing, that I handed out to everybody, we can see in the top part that it's inequality. All the stick figures get the same height box. However, in the bottom part, one stick figure, because they're on a slope, and they have a disadvantage to seeing the sunset, they're given two boxes to help them see the sunset in the same view as the other stick figures. So I think that's a really important distinction, something that we missed the boat with with our task force. So overall, equity is the approach, and equality is the outcome. And here, you can see the data that Mr. Lee showed. We really talked about making sections more equal. And here you can see the data that Mr. Lee showed. We really talked about making sections more equal. Well, in my professional opinion, and again, I'm, I'm not, we didn't talk about this as a task force meeting, but this is my professional opinion. And I volunteered to give this presentation. So I prepared some data for you. So if you flip over on your handout, I'll actually give the credit to my spouse who helped me get this data. So this is publicly available MCAS data for grades three and four. Okay, I did not include data for grade five because not all the schools have grade five. So you can see, these are MCAS scores for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, for English, math, and then overall, where they're just added together. And then you can see the different colors of the lines are the six different elementary schools. And the thing that I'd like to point out is that as an example, the Ross School has overall lower MCAS scores over the three years. And I'm, I'm asking the question, why are we talking about making class sections equal, including Ross, when we have an inequity in learning at the example of Ross School? Okay, so I really want to think about and encourage the school committee to reframe our questions. Instead of making them equal, think about those inequities and take it farther than the task force actually did. Okay, so now let's actually talk about the data from the task force. So here, the option one was to renovate the old South Building, repurpose it as an early, early elementary students center. And I think overall the sentiment was, that was best idea of all the ideas that we could think of. Do you consider that there would be some time to retrofit the facility? I know that young children, they're smaller, they may need a little bit different supports. Okay, next slide. Okay, there was another option to send some students from Flaherty or Morrison to South and increase the enrollment for Ross. And again, I'll encourage you to think about the data that I just showed you. Why are we considering increasing the class sizes at Ross? When it's, the MCAS data shows that perhaps those students need more resources and more support. And maybe they would not benefit from higher class sizes at Ross. And I know that I'm a Flaherty parent, I'm going to stay as very neutral as possible, but I'll just bring out that there is a concern that there's lots of families at Flaherty that live very close to East. They would be sent to Rock, to South in this, in this opportunity. And again, Mr. Lee pointed out that this is only a short-term solution. Redistricting would be needed again in a couple of years. Okay, next slide. Um, here, you can see that in this option, BPS should move specialized program to Liberty and Highlands so that all schools can have a specialized program. Now, my mom was a preschool specialized teacher. She taught children on the autistic spectrum for thirty years and then taught speech therapy. And I know the demands of those teachers. And I'm going to get to how I voted in this one in particular in a minute. But you can see here that everybody thought this was very popular because there are lots of benefits for typically developing students to be with students that are in specialized. Everybody learns, okay, those students that are typically developing learn from the students that might be in a specialized program or an individualized learning center. But I'm going to give this a caveat and we're going to get to it in a minute. Okay, next slide. Okay, in here, this was what if we just redistricted everything? And this would affect approximately fifty to sixty families as it stated here. And it says that it would save approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. And again, this would be a savings of about seventeen section, which would be seventeen teachers, teachers' jobs, that a lot of them live here in Braintree. What some concerns that have been brought up by both the task force and by listening to parents, I've been listening to a lot of parents in the school system. This is their first normal year since COVID. These students have been through a lot of upheaval, a lot of learning changes. Consider that this may not be the right time. Okay, next slide. So here, you can see in the previous four slides that all of the task force members voted whether they are in favor or not in favor of those four menu options. And we voted back in December. Well, we took a second vote after thinking about it and letting those ideas ruminate for a couple of weeks. And I revoted after talking to some constituents and talking with my PTO and talking with teachers. And I actually changed my vote after talking to a lot of people. So I'll give you one example. So option three, moving one program, one specialized program to Liberty and Highlands. I talked to the specialized teacher at Flaherty at the ILC. And she shared with me the perspective that changed my vote. So I'm one of the three people who changed their vote from yes, I like that menu option before, said I said, no, I don't like this menu option. Here's why. The, the special education program, the ILC program at Flaherty, it's, it's very physically, very emotionally demanding for those teachers. We did not get those kinds of perspectives of those teachers in the task force committee meetings. And I bring that up because that's really important data, that's really important qualitative data that we did not gather and vote on in a task force. So it's another example of our shortcomings and where I encourage the school committee to gather more qualitative and more quantitative data for their decision-making. That's all I have.
So the final slide represents, in essence, any recommendations that the task force should make. And you can see there's not a hundred percent consensus on anything other than the first option. Twenty out of twenty people thought the early elementary center was something to pursue. But it's been stated all along, the group's job was to come here, tell you what they thought, tell you what they learned, tell you what they think about all the things that were discussed. I, and drop it in your lap. And decide, you know, as a group, how would you like to pursue what you've now heard, that you've now seen? If you have any questions that, you know, immediately leap to mind, we'll try to answer them. If there's information that, as Rachel has expressed, that you think could be part of the information that you need to consider, you know, if you can identify that, we'll go through the process of collecting that. But at this point, I turn it over to you. Other than thanking the, the people who showed up five times to, to meet in the evening and, and to have long conversations about difficult topics, somber is a great word to describe the meetings. But the seriousness at which they took it and the commitment to trying to do the very best job possible, I appreciate for every last member.
I'd echo that as well. Thank you, Rachel, for being here and for, for presenting and giving your additional, your additional input. We appreciate that. I open it up to the school committee. Any comments or questions?
I have a few comments if I may, Madam Chair.
Mr. Deven.
I think it's important for people to realize where we were. Madam Chair, when you and I came onto this committee eleven years ago, everything was broken. It still is. East Junior High School with a major renovation to it. And I remember the first SOI we put forth, we put forth an SOI to try and go after one of the elementary schools. And the MSBA came back to us and says, not enough. And we kind of looked back. It was the first time we really had an SOI with them where they actually looked at us. It was not comprehensive enough. It was not taking care of all the problems, which are from bottom all the way to top. Now, it took us thirty years to get like this. When I went to Braintree High School, I think it was last century, when the buggies were there and the horses. We had twenty or thirty maintenance people, welders. We had three or four plumbers. Then we got down to one. You don't maintain ten schools with one plumber, one electrician. So we're with you. Frustration isn't even close. And thank God I'm coming to the end. Why? I've been banging my head against the wall with others on this committee for years. Since we first got on here saying, everything is broken, going after the East project, which was spearheaded by the last mayor, Mr. Sullivan. And we were able to do that within the confines of our budget, somewhere around eighty somewhat, I'm sorry, forty-seven million dollars. Right, now the South had to be done a different way. And that was taken on by this current mayor. So we've had to be very, very creative. And you know what I'm seeing? Same hard decisions we've all been making. Welcome to the club. And it's not an easy one. It's hard. And seeing you all here, thank you. Look at the diversity here. Look at all the numbers. They're all over the place. Nothing's changed. We're still going after what we can do to make a difference. Now, we've nailed down fifth, sixth in one academy, seventh and eighth in another academy. That is going to truly change their lives. What we got to try and do is figure out, what are we going to do next? Now, one of the things that's happening with South is, we're going to actually have swing space. Do, do have any of you had middle school children go through East over the last three or four years? They had to go through construction. And thank God those parents were awesome. They said, we see a better use of our money. And when East comes online, you walk through it. And you, raise your hand if you have elementary school kids. Most of you do. You're going to a better place. You are. Doesn't make the excuses okay for us to what we're going to try and do with the elementary schools. But like, that, that, that old story, the, the kid that put his fingers in the dike and whatnot. We've got several holes we've been trying to deal with. Stave things off. We now have swing space itself. And we're going to try and better use that, utilize that space so we can make a difference and go after these problems. The newer members on the school committee are going to go after that because my time's over. Done what I could. Tried to put that flag up at the beach as far as we can. It's time for someone else to pick up that flag and take it further. Welcome to the club. Thank you very much. You look at what, what is done by this advisory group and thank you. But now, my humble apologies, we should have some time to really digest this and look into what, what we've heard tonight and, you know, listen to this so that we can make a better decision going forward. Thank you, Madam Chair, for indulging me.
Thank you, Mr. Deven.
I know I went over my two minutes.
So I would like to thank all the parents who came to speak tonight and Dr. Horak and Mr. Boucher. I think it's important for us to recognize as a school committee that the most important thing we need to ask is how are our students doing? And how can we improve? Yes. And Dr. Horak, a very important point about equity. And it's something that we need to give a lot of thought to. Looking at our, the MCAS comparisons, we see that we see declines from two thousand nineteen. Our twenty twenty-three school department budget only had a point eight percent increase compared to the overall four point four percent increase for the town. Our last meeting on January ninth, I asked if math support classes that were eliminated at high school would be reinstated. And Dr. Scully stated that the quality of instruction made up on the elimination of these courses. But time on task matters. No matter how great our teachers are and how hard they work, they can't make up the lost learning time. We saw a significant decline in our twenty twenty-two math reading and writing scores. Fewer students scored in exceeding expectations and meeting expectations. And more students fell into partially meeting expectations and not meeting expectation categories. Over the past few years, we've dropped math strategies and math workshop at Braintree High School, math connections at the middle schools, programs designed to help any students struggling in math, not just those with an IUP. We reduced our reading specialists from eleven to seven at the elementary school. And we lost our two reading specialists at the middle school. And we eliminated the seventh grade writing class, RWR. The result was a significant drop in our, our writing scores. So Braintree has revenue problems. They've addressed this at Town Council. We have spoken about it while we were discussing the FY twenty-three budget. I would like to see how an accounting of how the eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty cents ARPA award to address lost instructional time and learning loss was spent. We also spent, received a reimbursement of eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars for increasing health services and social services and to address educational disparities. So where is that one point seven million right now? We we have another round of ARPA money coming up this year, three point five million. I would like to see that money being used to address some of these inequities. Math interventionists at the elementary and middle school level. Extra time or course to build writing schools rather than just splitting the current ELA time allotment into alternating periods. And as Ms. Rose, those science labs at the high school need to be updated. They really, we have not, we have applied to MSBA for year after year. And we've been rejected. So maybe we'll be accepted five years from now, but what about those students that are in those labs right now? So I think in some, we need to look at those, address in those inequities. We need to look at our budget very carefully for FY twenty-four. Make sure that we're applying for every single grant that this town is eligible for. And we have, the town has some hard decisions to make. Absolutely. And you can see that in the discussions coming up in the town council. The school department will suggest a budget and suggest savings. But ultimately, the budget allotment from an agreement with the mayor's office and approval by the town council. So we need to advocate for our schools. Where's that money going to come from? We're going to do an overrun. Are we going to apply for more grants? That needs to be looked at very, very seriously. And we need to address those inequities that have become quite glaring over the past couple of years. There are many children that are doing very well in, in school, but there's a and we need to make sure that we are providing the support for them. So as I've come back to my initial statement, our job as school committee members is to ask the question, how are our students doing and how can we improve their student success in heat?
You can stop.
Thank you. I want to thank all the parents that came here tonight. I appreciate what you had to say. It hasn't followed on, you know, on our deaf ears. We're very much aware of your concerns. Some of the concerns you share, we also share. So we're definitely, thank you for being here to point those out. Thank you for Ken, for bringing, you know, the community perspective and addressing, you know, pointing out that we really need to look at the big picture. The reason why we're even looking at redistricting is because of financial constraints and we wouldn't be doing it otherwise. So there's a lot to this. So I really appreciate everybody's input. I know it took a lot of time and I think it's valuable for us to hear these options. You know, some of the questions I had pretty much have been answered. But, you know, I think also there could be more options, you know, just these four options may not be the only ones and, and maybe there's more to consider. And I think I absolutely agree that we need to do a deeper dive, that we need to have some research done, some data and some demographics and fact finding before we can even, you know, put anything into motion. So that's definitely something that we need to look at. You know, personally, I'm not against redistricting, as a lot of you say the same thing, if it's truly based on equity. And that's the key. So, you know, that was the understanding when we voted back in April of two thousand twenty-two, that this would be that this would be looking at inequity and not just financial constraints. So to me, those are, those, while they may go together, they're two separate things. And we got to make sure that we're very thoughtful on how we move forward on this. So thank you. And again, I, I can't help but to say that a lot of this focus seems to be on small class sizes, small class sizes, small class sizes. But again, as Rachel, you know, gave out this nice diagram, you know, equal is not the same as equitable. And that's very important. And, and I'm very mindful of that. So I appreciate that. So again, I thank everyone for, for being part of this and contributing. And we'll definitely need to, you know, take a deeper you know, take a deeper dive and look at all these things and, and we will have public comment and we will keep coming back. And maybe there's more options than just what's here. So, thank you.
Okay.
Good job. Uh, thanks everyone coming tonight. I appreciate it. You know, I like this type of environment. I think if our meetings were more like this for everyone, I think a lot more would get accomplished. Um, you know, thank you to all the task force who showed up, did the work, put out there, as Tom said, we gotta kind of digest that. Um, so just a few things, you know, from hearing people talk tonight, you know, people have talked around town. Seems like the process is what a lot of people were, you know, kind of had an issue with and Tom was saying, you know, the analysis and evaluation we wanted for that. And I think that's a good, you know, it's criticism. We should be able to take, kind of look into it. If we did things right, you know, we can obviously second guess ourselves as well. Um, and I, I agree with what a lot of people are saying, you know, I'm not gonna, not gonna repeat it, you know, um, it was sorry, he said, you know, kind of difficult conversations we have to have in town, which people don't really like because it's kind of hard, you know, people don't want to say the wrong thing, you know, people get offended. If you say the wrong thing, it can be used against you. So conversations really don't happen. You know, even just something, you know, kind of hypothetical, you know, it's, it's best for kids. What if we come to a decision where it's best for kids to stay in the same schools rather than keep 17 teachers, right? That's an awful choice to be in, but that's a tough conversation that we kind of have to talk about out loud as a group, you know, kind of that's what the founders envisioned, you know, robotic, robust debate can often be chaotic, you know? You guys really shouldn't look at us as kind of friends and peers, you know, you should look at us kind of as a business because I don't know how it happened decades ago, no one in the room faulted, but you know, public schools has become kind of a business, right? There's a lot of money involved for it on a bigger picture and a bigger scale. Um, you know, it's almost kind of like pro sports leagues. You guys should look at us as a business and players up there and it kind of should be that relationship as we talk and kind of negotiate all that. Um, you know, I want to thank Ken for coming up and talking tonight, you know, I know the Boucher family, you know, this is a type of family that helped build Braintree over decades for a lot of us that we own, you know? It's, it's important to listen to those people. Um, one of the biggest unkept secrets in the town is the reputation of which schools have gone the wrong way for over a decade. I don't know, really talked about it and that's nobody's fault in here. That's not blaming fingers, it's just teams with God in the wrong way. And I know that, you know, I plug into a lot of people in town, but people leaving with their feet, people are moving and that's a lot of, I get it, people because of the schools. You know, it's friends, family, people I grew up with, all that stuff, you know, I mean, that's why I'm here. I don't have kids. I don't want to see the branch of schools go the wrong way. A lot of these conversations kind of have to happen publicly like this, you know, where we do go after each other. We should feel uncomfortable at times and, and kind of hear these things we disagree with, you know? Talking about this, you know, putting all this together. You know, we keep talking about inequities and equities, you know? Not every kid's equal, right? You know, you're gonna see kids on different, different wavelengths and well, but are we providing equal opportunity to everybody in the schools? And if that's not happening, then that's on us and that should be us fixing that. So we kind of should talk about that, but, um, yeah, you know, you know, I agree with, you know, the members up here, especially, you know, we should go and digest and know the people that spoke tonight. Hopefully you guys kind of digest it and tell us what you think, you know what I mean? Cause it's, it's your children, it's your decisions, you know, we just kind of make it. So I'd like to hear more feedback from you, what you guys want to see, uh, listen, talk to anyone anytime, send me an email, meet me, all that stuff. So, thank you.
Good luck. Don't want to say anything?
Uh, hey, thank you, Madam Chair. It's fun to thank everyone for, uh, coming up tonight and, uh, all the work that was done, uh, by the committee task force. Um, seems like there's one item that was unanimously, uh, voted on. Um, obviously we're gonna do everything we can to, you know, maintain equity in the schools and, um, you know, continue to work towards that. So I just wanted to thank everyone for their input and, uh, it's, it's well received. Thank you.
Um, again, I just want to thank everybody for, who served on the task force. Um, it was a lot of thoughtful discussion and debate. Um, and if there are other ideas that, you know, school committee wants to put forward by all means, um, you know, next steps, you know, we, we do want to hear. I appreciate everybody that came tonight. This was very exciting to see all of you here and, and all you make your comments. So I really do appreciate you all being here. Um, we are gonna have a public hearing on March 6th. This, this is gonna continue. We have a meeting in February, a school committee meeting. This will continue to be on our agenda as far as what we want to do next. We are going to have a public meeting on March 6th. We want to hear from people. We want to tell your neighbors, tell your, you know, other parents, community members, whoever would like to come, March 6th at East, so that we'll have a much bigger forum. People can come up to the microphone and, um, and share their opinions. Um, you know, we understand the timing on this is potentially tight if we need to make any decisions. And again, we've discussed, this is going hand in hand with the budget. Um, the fin- finance and operations committee met last week and we are meeting again on February 2nd. And we're looking at, you know, where, where we've been the last few years and where we're going in FY24. And that's what's said repeatedly when we came out to the PTOs, Mr. Lee and I, is we discuss the budget on a weekly basis with the mayor. So we'll have to see where we are in the coming weeks and months. Um, he needs to present a budget to the Town Council, uh, by May 1st. So again, within the next couple of months, we'll have an idea of where we stand. Um, and as I've said at the, at the PTO meetings, we are, have a $2.2 million deficit that Mr. Lee touched upon, um, one-time money we used last year. And we need a 4% increase year over year just to stay whole. You know, not there, there, to Ms. Tuffey's point, there are positions we would like to, to bring back. There are new positions we would like to create. But at this point, we're looking to just stay whole, a maintenance of effort. Um, 84% or 86%, 84%, 86% of our budget is people. So in order for us to save money, unfortunately, I know we're calling sections, they're people. And we realize that and we're, we're cognizant of that. Um, but if we need to save money in our budget this year and we have to take cuts, this might be, the redistricting might be a good alternative as opposed to cutting out the positions. Two years ago, they cut all the positions that, that Ms. Tuffey was, was talking about, math and, and reading specialists. Those had to be cut because we hadn't cut the budget. So we went into this knowing potentially, well, knowing that we were facing a cliff, as we've said, about a $5 million cliff. So we need to figure out what we're gonna do going forward, um, what the town can support. And we need to come up with some solutions. We need to find some other sources of revenue in this town. And we need as a, as a community to come together and support those solutions. Um, we can't keep saying no to everything. We need to support some solutions. We need to be able to move forward and we need to fully fund this school budget. So with that, we are going to continue to talk about this at our February meeting. We are going to have the March 6th school committee, um, school committee meeting on March 6th, but it'll be a public hearing. We want to hear everybody's comments and we will keep people formed, we'll collect additional data if people have other ideas of what data we should be collecting. And again, thank you, Rachel, for your additional information. And, uh, yeah, we, we need to solve this. So, um, and again, as a community, as a, as the Braintree Public Schools, as, you know, Braintree parents and community members. So, and again, Ms. Mr. Boucher, thank you very much. Your preamble was very impactful. Um, you know, uh, we, I am worried about the reputation of the Braintree Public Schools, not just for my, for my, uh, the value of my home, which is obviously is important, but for our students, you know, my kids graduated in 2010 and 2013. They got wonderful educations and I want that for every other kid that's, that's currently in the school system and the children that are coming up. So thank you. Thank you all very much for being here. Moving on.
Administrative updates, basically.
Uh, so we only have one this evening. As I believe all of you are aware, um, recently, uh, Jen Fait, Principal of Ross Elementary School announced her resignation effective at the end of the year. Uh, so Norvinazer will be leading a search committee. Just wanted to allow her opportunity to describe where we are in that process.
Um, so we have sent out a survey to all the staff at Ross who are interested in joining the committee, um, that there's respondents back. Um, and then we also sent out a survey to families of the Ross community to ask for any of their interest in the search committee. Um, we will narrow it down to two to three Ross staff, two to three family members, um, and then some directors and administrators, um, along with the school committee representative. So we're aiming to have 10 to 12, um, on the committee.
And Ms. Ms. Tuffey has volunteered to serve as the, as the faculty. I'm sorry, when does that begin? When you?
Um, so I anticipate that the committee will be finalized, um, in the next day or two. Um, and then we will wait another week. The position has been open for, uh, one week. So we will wait another week to continue to get more candidates and hopefully start to meet after that.
Thank you. Moving on to my favorite part. Uh, moving on to the student representative updates.
I can go first. Um, I had the amazing opportunity to attend the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, MIAA, and the Massachusetts School Administrators Association, MSAA, Joint Diversity Equity and Inclusion Summit on Friday, January 19th. Intailed hearing for Massachusetts GSA Council as well as transitioning through many workshops concerning topics of inclusion in respect to race, ethnicity, religion, divergence and physical disabilities, sexual orientation and gender identity among students. I was grateful to be able to attend this conference at Holy Cross's campus with five other Braintree High School students, presenting Student Council, Girls Empowerment Movement, so known as JEM Club, Strengthen, Strengths and Differences Club, Best Buddies and Key Club. I hope to bring these valuable educational lessons back to the BHS student body, starting in difficult conversations to ensure that each and every member of our school feels included, respected and appreciated. Also, the BHS student body is moving forward with its many plans through each of its individual clubs and organizations and will be continuing with their plans for the spring after midterms conclude this week. BHS students will be taking midterms this week on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday for all of their core subject classes with Monday officially commencing the start of our year's second semester.
Thank you.
Um, I have a couple of things I'd like to address. Number one is some student council updates. The class of 24 and 23 are currently fundraising for prom and indecisive on a theme. So that's something to look forward to. But, um, prom's exciting for us. And then we also have a JEM Club summit that is coming up this weekend at Northeastern. I know Will spoke a little bit about the JEM Club. Um, it's about menstrual equality for women across the state of Massachusetts and hopefully some of our student representatives who attend the conference will be able to implement some of that knowledge in Braintree High School and make it a more inclusive and comfortable place for all girls and who do that. And then we also have an update from freshman unity day we did this fall. So this was the pilot program for a new initiative, Dr. Scully created to sort of integrate freshmen better into the high school and ease the bridge between middle school curriculum and high school life, all the aspects, academics, friends, just a change in the school environment, teachers, rigor, all those things. So, uh, basically what we had happen was a bunch of upperclassmen or peer leaders sat outside with the freshmen in a comfortable envi- environment, had ice cream with them, all those fun things to get them to talk and sort of just prep them to go into the year. Hey, get involved in some clubs. Don't be worried too much about school. And then recently this past week, we followed up with them during an extended homeroom period to see kind of how that's going. And if the initiative actually made a difference in how they're being integrated into high school life. And a lot of them expressed some anxiety towards grades, keeping them up, maybe creating a balance between school, friends and all those things. And a lot of the peer leaders, we eased their anxiety, said, okay, we've been through it. We're still going through it. So you're not alone. Um, and give some tips to them on how to balance school and then, you know, later work with friends, family and a lot down that process because we don't want to stress them out about college and everything like that. And so they seem to be eased. I think it's going to be a good program that's going to continue the rest of the years in Braintree High School that will really help freshmen become bigger part of the school community earlier on and also help them get more involved and immerse themselves in extracurriculars that'll carry on throughout the four years of their high school experience as teachers.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll be going next. So, um, starting off with the diversity council. So a couple of weeks ago, we had, um, the Anti-Defamation League come in with an ADL training and a lot of students actually chose to participate in that and get trained on, um, a lot of topics in our school, specifically racism and orientation and having these typical conversations. And we were super like impressed with the turnout. And, uh, those kids along with Ms. Gonzalez will be working together to educate the other kids who are not part of the training. And it was very, um, informative. I think a lot of students had the output that it was just a truly like amazing training. Like it was a really eye excuse me, eye opening and, um, getting the experience and learning about these things that we may not have to learn about every day. But, you know, like they took their days out from school time to learn about this. We're really impressed and we're really grateful for them for learning all that teaching it to the other students who weren't there. And then, um, ASA had their first, their new year festival this past, and I want to thank the mayor and Ms. Copeland Mayor for being there. It was such a great turnout. And I think we're so surprised that so many people showed up and I think ASA, we were able to get a great amount of money. It was a great fundraiser and people had so much fun. So I think we're looking for in the next few years to get a better, like a bigger space and more people to come. It's definitely like a great turnout. But, um, overall, I think ASA just wants to say thank you to everyone and the seniors are super impressed, like their first year really doing something like this and reading was super supportive. We had a lot of people who donated and supported our club. And, um, we want to thank everyone to come there. We want to thank Mr. Dan for helping us organize everything and all the students, because we've a large committee of kids who take ASA and they all participated and helped out on some or the other. So we're looking forward for that to continue in the years to come and as well as celebrating other cultural festivals.
I'd like to speak on behalf of myself and the other student representatives when I say that the majority of students express immense appreciation for our teachers and stand in solidarity with them. They push for a new fair contract. We acknowledge that this is a difficult time for budgeting, but these are our educators, our mentors, our role models whose invaluable guidance and dedication proves, provides a solid foundation for every student in this district. The products of this education system, especially nearing the end of our branchy public schools career, we feel obligated to stand in solidarity with the kind and skilled professionals who have brought us up over the years. Their unwavering commitment has blossomed the manyest Braintree student alum into an intelligent and productive individual. We humbly communicate our hope that this effort will be recipated when considering the rest of the trust.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments about the reports from our, our student reps? No, as always, thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Policy and Education Subcommittee.
Thank you. So, um, we have, uh, two policies that we're can, we are looking at for consideration. First, we uh, first policy, um, the policy committee discussed on, at our December 15th meeting, that is the, uh, bullying policy review and update. Uh, it comprises of two parts, uh, JICF-B, bullying, harassment, sexual harassment, discrimination and hazing policy and then policy, uh, JICF-B-R, which is, um, Braintree Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. So this is, uh, renewed, reviewed, um, mainly by school councils, uh, policy, uh, meeting principals, um, and I would uh, like to talk, um, basically it's the same, there are, there aren't, um, many changes that I would like to highlight a couple. Uh, first on, um, each one, part B and the policy JICF-B. Um, I would like to suggest that we use gender, gender neutral language there currently. It says any employee or student who believes that he or she has been subjected to bullying. Uh, and to be consistent with the rest of the document, I think that should read employees or students who believe that they have been subjected to bullying, harassment, sexual harassment, discrimination or hate crime have the right to, so we're gonna change he or she to, uh, uh, to using the plural employees and students. That is the same way they're referred to in, in E. So it would be consistent. And the other, um, the only other issue that I saw was that, um, it was a formatting issue, um, on page page three, um, we should be using numbers, um, rather than lowercase a, b, c, on page, um, by, um, it would say K and then L rather than, now it says K and, uh, it says K despite This K besides targets that needs to be changed. On pages five through seven. On guidelines. They're listed as one through 12 and they should be a K through L and a lowercase letter should change to numbers. I believe I spoke to Ms. Deey about this and she being set when they were converting the document from Google to. Where there was the. The format. Because if you look at our current policy, the form that's online right now, it's it's switched correctly. So she's going to address that. So the only wording change would be in D. Employees or students. They have been subjected to bullying, so we make that gender neutral. Questions about our discussion on policies.
Any questions or comments?
That is, that is a first reading. And the other. Which is the regulations J I C F B slash R. Again, this is the same as the current policy. The only thing that's different is on page 10. We deleted. In under. Your leaders conducted an assembly for freshmen out to address the problem with bullying, harassment at VHS. We do the following. There's a number of bullet points. And under. A separate group of peer leaders. We are going to read the. Parentheses, I E mean girls, that is a stereotype. So those, those. Will come back. That will come back to us at our next meeting with those revisions. And we can consider that for second reading. Just. Are there any other questions about this? Just formatting changes with those two.
Two minor changes in wording.
Two minor changes in wording. And.
We'll bring those back on February 6th. And a committee for approval.
So. The second. Policy that's up for first reading is J K A A Physical Restrictive Students. We did not have this as a policy, a formal policy in our policy manual. Mr. Lee, would you like to just speak about how this came to be this?
This was part of, we had a chair review with the state around civil rights and special education. And they had brought to our attention that we actually don't have a school committee policy voted on by this body. So hence the policy in front of you. You'll also find in your packet. Of the procedural documentation behind it, which in meeting with the state subsequent to their. Visit to our school system, they will be using as a model for other school districts within the state. So that's a kudos to Petra Platt and her crew who put that together.
Excuse me, through the chair. And Mr. Lee, just what you explained at the policy subcommittee was that this really is. Meant to address special needs students and not just the general population when somebody gets into a complication. This is.
Correct, correct. Yeah, yeah. Obviously, we have. At times, we have students whose disabilities might lead to some dangerous behaviors. We have staff that are trained to manage those behaviors and this policy directly relates to that.
So then we will give people members time to read through that. It's lengthy. I would like to commend the. The staff that worked on putting this together because it is a very comprehensive and well thought out document. Now, the remainder of the policies. Are second reading or approval. We have, as you know, we have been going through our policy manual on this. These. Last four policies represent the. The conclusion of our review of section B. So. First one is on school councils. And it goes. Hand in hand with the second one, movement plan. In 2022, Massachusetts. Association of School Committee. Consolidated and updated these two policies. So for. Which I discussed at our last meeting. So for. DFA. I would like. If there's any further discussion of this, I would like to ask for a motion to update policy B D F A. By consolidating Braintree Policies, B D F A, School Councils. And Policy B D F A E3 Conduct of School Council Business. To align with the 2022 MASC consolidation and update.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Cobblemayor and a second by Mr. Lynch. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous.
And the second one is is right along the same vein. That's B D F A slash E. That is. School Improvement Plans. So unless there are any questions about that, I would ask for a motion to update Policy B D F A slash E School Improvement Plans. By consolidating Braintree. B F A slash E1 School Improvement Plan. And Policy B D F A slash E2. The submission and approval of the School Improvement Plan to align with the. Twenty-two MASC consolidation and update.
I do have, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I do have one question.
Yes.
The committee will appoint a voting delegate and alternative delegate to represent Braintree at the Massachusetts. Oh, sorry.
It's a lot of letters.
Okay. Conferences, conventions, and workshops. That's all we're on.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the next ones. Yeah. Okay, so.
I have a motion by Ms. Cobbleman. And second by Mr. Lynch. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, so the last two have to do with. School committee memberships and going to conferences. First one, B I B A is straight out of the M S, M A S C. Handbook. That's a school committee conferences, conventions, and workshop. And we would like to add that to the brief manual. So. Committee members are aware of what's available. Sarah, a motion to. Add Policy B I B A.
I have a question on the second one, so go ahead. Second, I have motion by Ms. Cobblemayor, second by Mr. Lynch. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Okay, so the second one is the one where we're adding some language to the M A S C. Policy. And this came about when. I realized that Braintree did not send a delegate to the annual convention. And we did not vote on the resolutions that were proposed by. Members. That. So.
Ask my question now?
Yes.
Okay, so the committee will appoint a voting delegate and an alternative delegate to represent Braintree at the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Delegate Assembly. So the only way you can vote is if you're. In attendance.
So, so we can have one delegate in attendance. It's unlike the convention, the person who is. Our delegate does not have to pay a fee to attend that. Delegate Assembly, although many, most, most of the towns, surrounding towns. People who attend and elect a delegate. So.
So this, this is the meeting they have in November?
This is the meeting they have in November.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
If you recall, Ms. Kade sent us a report from the Resolutions Committee in September of 2022.
Right. So the school committee would vote in a meeting.
Yeah, prior to.
Prior to the assembly. So we would vote as a unit, as a committee. And then our delegate, our alternate, our alternate would actually need to attend. This conference or this assembly in order to vote on our behalf. And these are non-binding resolutions.
So, so these were the resolutions from 2022. There were.
But again, I am familiar with the resolutions from this year, but they're non-binding resolutions. Is that? This is just something that the school committee, the years that I've been on have done it.
This is, this is something that. That's put forth by. Member districts at their regional meetings. And. And their resolutions, just like other resolutions, you know, they said, whereas such and such.
Clarification, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Devon, did you have a question?
I have a point of order. Based on how we've set things up, where it says the committee will appoint a voting delegate and alternate. I believe we should take out the committee and put the chairperson.
No, this just comes from, I, this comes straight from M A S C. At their handbook, look at their handbook. It says, I, I, I just copied that word for word. The committee will appoint a voting delegate and an alternate delegate to represent Braintree at the Association of School Committee's delegate assembly. And I have actually, I watched another school committee go through this process, which is why I. Want to make sure that we have representation in the future. And what they did is they, they went through the resolutions, they voted on them. They asked who was, who, if anybody was. Planning to attend. And then they, they elected. One of the people who was already planning to attend to be their representative. Although, as I said, to attend the delegate assembly, you don't necessarily have to attend the whole. You don't have to attend the whole convention.
Okay.
And you don't have to pay the fee.
Okay.
But Braintree should absolutely have representation and 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 have a say. We are in.
Okay.
Yes, I think it's District Three, the side unit three, this of these district of school committees. So.
All right, well, you clarified my question. So we would have to find somebody who is going to attend, who's available. The thing is that these are during the week, during the day. So I know historically, we haven't always had someone who can go, but absolutely. Okay. That's fine. You've clarified my questions. Any other questions?
So. Just as a formatting. Thing, I think we should. Indent the section in red and and number those paragraphs one and two because they relate to taking an active part. School community associations.
Okay, so I need a motion based on the changes, just the formatting changes that that. Okay, I have a motion by Cobblemayor, a second by Mr. Lynch. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you all. Okay, thank you, Ms. Tuffy.
We approved that formatting change. Are we going to approve the policy BK? Do we need?
We just made a motion to approve it with the edits that you just, what you just outlined. So yes, it's all, it's approved.
Okay, so our next meeting. Is going to be here on February 2nd. We have switched off with Finance. Committee, so it's going to be at 6:00 PM. On February 6th.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Financing operations. So we met on January 19th. We reviewed the town auditor's highlights and analysis of the FY23 budget and reviewed the FY22 and FY23 budgets. We had an initial discussion regarding the FY24 budget, including the need to cover the $2.2 million one-time money that was used in FY23. And what would be required to remain at least whole for FY24. The district is working, working on a budget. That could represent a 4% increase over the existing, as we've said in past meetings. 4% is typically what we need in order, again, just to stay whole. Again, this is a process. There's much work to be done over the coming months. And our next finance and operation meeting will be Thursday, February 2nd. Prior to the Policy and Education meeting at 5:00 PM in this room. And that is all I have. Our next meeting is February 6th here. And again, the meeting after that, March 6th, is a public hearing to talk about. Actions, next steps. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Devon.